Good morning, half a day. Thank you for being here this morning. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today's May 20, 2022. The time is about 8:34 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this virtual hearing, I'm sorry, for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, September 13, and again on Friday, September 16, 2022. They were also posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal, and notices were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. Individuals testifying today shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We have only one agenda item for this 8:30 a.m. hearing. That is Bill Number 333-36-COR, sponsored by Clinton E. Rigel, Therese M. Terlahi, Tina Rose Munia Barnes, Joe S. Anagastin, Jose Pito Terlahi. It's an act to add new Item D to Section 401092 and to add a new Item 6 to 40118, both of the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act Title 10 Guam Code Annotated Relative to Cannabis Content in Edible and Cosmetic Cannabis Products. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of Senator Rigel, sponsor of the bill, and also Senator Taita Gui. Thank you, colleagues. Our committee is happy to be part of the swift response to resolving conflict in the law that would impede the ability of public health to issue licenses for certain cannabis businesses. And I'd like to thank all of you who are present today to participate as the committee works through these proposed solutions and with the sponsor of the bill. So now we hand the floor to the sponsor of the bill to introduce this bill. Senator Rigel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 333-36 is a fairly straightforward piece of legislation, I believe. The genesis of this legislation really came about, as the speaker was mentioning previously, to correct some of the inconsistencies in Guam law. And what that is, is with the passage of the Guam Industry Act, of course, we legalized cannabis for adults as well as set up a framework to begin working on developing an industry for cannabis for adult use. Part of that industry includes, of course, the sale of what's referred to in the cannabis industry as edibles. Edibles can encompass any number of food products that contain THC, everything from cookies to brownies to gummies to essentially any food product you can imagine. They now have ways of infusing them with THC. The inconsistency apparently was brought to our attention recently is that the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act does not allow for, essentially doesn't allow for cannabis or any cannabis derivatives to be put into food products. Because of that, the Department of Public Health raised this issue, in essence, saying that they would not be able to properly regulate food products that contain THC because their enabling legislation for the regulation of food products does not allow for cannabis or any cannabis derivatives to be put inside food for sale. So because of that, we worked together with the Department of Public Health as well as the governor's office in crafting this legislation. So this language came about through collaboration between those two entities and my office to come up with some legislation that we believe should rectify the matter by placing in some catch-all language. The catch-all language is pretty straightforward. It says, "Except that cannabis-infused products or cannabis products which are processed, manufactured, labeled and/or sold by an establishment shall not be considered adulterated solely on the basis of its cannabis content," which will also apply to Title 10 Guam Code Annotated, Chapter 23 and Chapter 24, and its rules and regulations. So we believe that this language should allow for the regulation and the sale of cannabis-infused products, and I believe that that should include THC as well as CBD-infused products. And again, this is the language that we came up with working together with the Department of Public Health as well as the Governor's Office Policy Division. So with that, I'd like to ask my colleagues for their support and also thank all of the members of the panel who have shown up this morning to provide testimony. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Rigel. I'd also like to recognize at this time the presence of my colleague, Senator Jose Pito Terlahi. Good morning, Senator. All right, so we have some people waiting outside also to testify, so we'll begin. We'll begin now with a testimony of the Department of Public Health and Social Services, beginning with Mr. Tom Nado, Chief Environmental Public Health Officer of the Department, the Division of Environmental Health. Tom Nado.
Thank you. Good morning, Speaker, Senator Rigel, Senator, I almost forgot your name, Taita Gui, and Senator Terlahi, thank you very much. My name is Tom Nado. I'm the Chief Environmental Public Health Officer with the Division Environmental Health of the Guam Department of Health and Social Services. With me is Ms. Leilani Navarro. She is the Environmental Public Health Officer Supervisor, also with the Division of Environmental Health. She oversees our consumer commodities program. On behalf of Arthur Yusanagastin, the Director of Department of Public Health and Social Services, we thank you for allowing us, the department, to provide our testimony on Bill 333-36, an act to add new Section D to Section 401092 and add a new Item 6 to Section 40118, both of the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act Title 10 GCA Relative to Cannabis Content in Edible and Cosmetic Cannabis Products. Our Division of Environmental Health, also known as DEH, is mandated to regulate the manufacture, distribution and retail sale of consumer commodities via the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act, which is Title 10 GCA, Chapter 40, and the sanitary operation of eating and drinking establishments and food establishments and their respective regulations such as the Guam Food Code and the Retail Food Store Sanitation Regulations. These laws and regulations give DEH the authority to regulate food and cosmetics infused with cannabodiol, CBD, THC and other cannabis-derived products. Currently, Section 401092C of the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act states that, quote, "A food shall be deemed to be adulterated if it is or bears or contains any food additive which is unsafe within the meaning of the federal act," unquote. The federal act referred in this section is the United States Food and Drug Cosmetic Act. And Section 201S of that act defines food additive as "any substance which results in it becoming a component of any food unless the substance is generally recognized as safe," which ironically is also called "grass" among qualified experts under the condition of its intended use or unless the substance meets a listed exception. At this time, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration does not recognize CBD, THC or other cannabis-derived compounds as grass for use as an ingredient in conventional foods such as cookies and brownies. However, Department of Public Health and Social Services does not oppose Bill 333-36 to allow cannabis-infused foods and cosmetics to be processed, manufactured and sold on Guam, provided it complies with all other existing laws and regulations. The catch-all language of the proposed bill removed these products from being adulterated solely on the fact that they contain CBD, THC or other cannabis-derived compounds. Likewise, Department of Public Health does not oppose the specific reference to Title 10 GCA, Chapter 23, which is the Eating and Drinking Establishment Statute, and Chapter 24, which is one for food establishments, in Bill 333-36. These two statutes and the governing, I'm sorry, these two statutes and the corresponding regulations govern the permitting of commercial establishments that can manufacture, process and sell food on Guam. By adding these statutes to Bill 333-36, sanitary permits can be issued to local manufacturers, processing plants and retail stores that carry cannabis-infused food and cosmetic products. Thank you once again for allowing the department to provide testimony on Bill 333-36. And thank you, Sisus Massey.
Thank you very much, Chief Nado. Ms. Navarro, did you want to add anything to that testimony?
Good morning, Speaker Terlahi, Senator Rigel, Senator Taita Gui and Senator Terlahi. Thank you for allowing us to provide testimony today. I am here to answer any questions that you may have regarding our consumer commodities program which oversee the commodities on islands such as food and those even containing cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, Daphne Shimizu.
Hovady. Hovady, Speaker Terlahi, Chairperson, Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, Senator Clint Rigel, Senator Pito Terlahi and Senator Taita Gui. For the record, I'm Daphne Shimizu and I'm the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation. I want to thank you today for the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill 333-36. Our agency does not have written testimony regarding this matter in relation to the issue of edibles for cannabis products. The department's position is that we defer to the Department of Public Health and Social Services on the issue of edibles. For DRT, of course, for cannabis, adult-use cannabis, what is most important is that it is clear that, what is, it is clear what's allowed by law just so that we can properly administer. And again, our position is we defer to the Department of Public Health and Social Services, but we want to thank you for this opportunity and I am here and available to answer any questions that you may have. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Director Shimizu. We'll now hear from Stephen Roberto.
Good morning, Senators. Half a day many luhudzen manainahu. Good morning, Senators and people of Guam. Before I submit my testimony, I'd just like to take the opportunity to recognize and thank the members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, Speaker Therese Terlahi, Chairperson, Senator Clint Rigel, sponsor of the bill 333-36, Senator Taita Gui, member and chairperson of Subcommittee on Medical Malpractice Law, and Senator Pito Terlahi. Thank you for furthering this legislation that will benefit our island. Although you've done the hard work and put much attention to this bill, please allow me to present some shortcomings that my testimony will help to address. My name is Stephen Roberto. For the record, I'm the owner of Guam's Real Deal, a company attempting to establish a legal cannabis business on our island. I'm pleased to appear before the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture to testify in support of Bill Number 333-36, the, quote, "An act to add a new item D to Section 401092 and to add a new item 6 to Subsection 40118, both of the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act Title 10 Guam Code Annotated Relative to the Cannabis Content in Edible and Cosmetic Cannabis Products Bill." As the committee well knows, the legislature established, or at least attempted to establish, a cannabis industry for our island. Years later, there still is no cannabis industry on Guam. I'm here today to implore the legislature to remove the last roadblocks to a growing and thriving cannabis industry on our island of Guam. Those roadblocks include the Department of Health and Social Services rules, the requirements of lab testing on Guam and the tax structure of the law. Currently, Guam's Department of Health and Social Services has decided to unilaterally render illegal many products made legal by the people of Guam through their legislature. With a wave of the pen, the Department of Health and Social Services rendered CBD-infused products and future cannabis-infused products illegal. It claims these products are illegal in the United States as well. But throughout the United States, individuals can purchase CBD-infused products, many of them edible, so long as they do not violate the Food and Drug Administration's advertising requirements. A simple search of amazon.com will show this as will walking into any number of stores on this island. But Guam's Department of Health and Social Services has unilaterally declared federally-legal products illegal on Guam. Bill Number 333-36 should be unnecessary, but if Guam's bureaucracy will contend that cannabis and CBD-infused products are illegal, then the legislature must and should act. Bill Number 333-36 is a necessary first step, but not the only one that should be taken. Additionally, the cannabis industry is not yet functioning and it's doubtful it ever will if the cannabis board will mandate the impossible, expensive testing for such a small market. Under current law, if there is no testing, there is no industry. As of today, there is no viable candidate to bring lab testing of cannabis products to Guam. Worse, it seems, the reason there is no lab on island is that no testing company believes that Guam's market is robust enough to support testing expenses in the first place. Thus, while companies like mine are undergoing a Byzantine process to acquire licenses, once they acquire said license, they will be unable to do anything due to the lack of a lab facility on Guam. There is no testing facility, and so long as there is no testing facility, there will be no industry on Guam. Given Guam's market size, there may never be. Our neighbors to the north, the Commonwealth of the Northern Mariana Islands, have an industry up and running without testing. All cannabis products announce that they are not lab-tested. I implore you to explore how we can adapt our rules to establish a truly homegrown local industry. Please remove the current testing requirements so that we can begin this industry. Finally, Guam's laws are written with the idea that cannabis will be federally-illegal for a time. If this situation ever changes, however, and companies are allowed to ship cannabis products intrastate legally, Guam's legal cannabis industry will be overwhelmed by an influx of cheap corporate cannabis grown in more economically-efficient areas of the United States. If companies can ship cannabis through the mail, our local industry will be at the whim of very large corporations with economies of scale that cannot be duplicated on our island home. Worse, because of current Guam law, imported cannabis will not be taxable under the current taxing regime. To avoid this possibility, this committee should consider extending the taxing regimen to all cannabis products, no matter where they are sourced from. Terms like responsible consumption and risk reduction are gaining steam on Guam for a reason. As a people, we're more willing to address the issues surrounding cannabis directly and honestly. Now is the time to destigmatize cannabis and learn more about its effectiveness as a medicine for treatments of various ailments as well as legitimate choice for adult recreational use. I'm very grateful to the work of the committee on this issue. Guam can be well situated to implement an effective cannabis regulatory and taxation framework right after passage of a bill that recognizes the legality of cannabis-infused products as well as relaxes the testing requirements while there is no lab facility on Guam. I believe this bill represents a thoughtful and effective first step in fixing the already confused cannabis industry regulatory scheme. I appreciate the opportunity to testify this morning in support of this important bill and I'm happy to answer any questions that the members of the committee may have. Thank you, Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Roberto. We'll now hear from Sean Salas.
Half a day and good morning, Senators. My name is Sean Salas and I'm a cancer survivor and I'm here today in support of Bill 333-36, a bill to allow the sale of cannabis-infused products. In March of 2021, in a span of one week, I went from being able to paddleboard every weekend, riding my mountain bike for 20-plus miles and running a 5K every other day to being unable to walk without assistance from crutches or walker and in some days, a wheelchair. After extreme headaches and slowly losing the ability to keep my balance while walking, I was taken by ambulance to GM, GRMC, where doctors eventually discovered a massive tumor in my brain which later confirmed to be a rare brain tumor cancer called medulloblastoma. Because Guam's inability to perform a surgery of this magnitude to remove the tumor, I ended up in Cedar Sinai Hospital in Los Angeles, California. The resection went well and in three days after the surgery, I was released from the hospital with a list of prescription medication for pain, nausea and steroids for my brain swelling. My whole life, I watched my dad struggle until the day he died with prescription pain relievers like Percocet and Fentanyl, which he was legally prescribed from his doctors at the veteran clinic. So I was very scared to take any of the medication in fear of addiction of, or any horrible side effects. So I asked my doctors in Los Angeles if it was okay for me to take alternative medicine such as cannabis to deal with my post-surgery recovery and they agreed it would be beneficial. But because my surgery was in my brain, I also feared creating pressure in my head from sneezing or coughing. So at first, I refrained from smoking cannabis and strictly used edible cannabis as my form of relief. Cannabis-infused gummies were the reason I never cracked open any of the pain or sleeping aid medication I was given. It brought relief in a much safer form than opiates. Some people suffer greatly going through cancer treatments, but all my doctors from surgery to radiation to chemotherapy were glad to see I remained in decent health while I was going through this journey and I personally believe that cannabis, specifically edible cannabis in the form of gummies, helped me avoid all the nasty side effects. With all the medical issues that plague our island that cause pain and suffering, I urge senators to offer our people an alternative form of smoking cannabis by passing Bill 333-36 and allow cannabis to be consumed in a safe, regulated food products. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Salas, for your testimony and I'm glad to see that you are doing well today. We'll now hear from Angela Santos.
Manana Sisus, Madam Chair, and members of the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. I would like to just begin with thank you to Senator Rigel and the members and whoever played part in making this available for our people in the health sense of it all. Some people don't like to smoke cannabis, so the only other, the only other way that they can ingest it is through food products. The work and that shows them that we care about their health. Cannabis, sorry, please forgive me. Thank you for addressing this concern of our people in an expedient manner. Thank you for taking action and hearing the concerns of our people with medical health issues. With this, we show our people that their health matters. Cannabis for me is a way of life. For those who suffer from cancer and other health issues in which cannabis helps them tremendously just to be able to leave, live at least a notch over a normal life in which their illness leaves them somewhat incapable. A lot of people cannot, like I said earlier, or prefer to not smoke. So the only other way to ingest this is to have food prepared. It's criminal how this plan is made and looked at as criminal. I am in full support of this measure and signa maasi naunzun naidzu enina opportuadat para baiu kentus para yestina bill 333-36-COR.
Sisus Massey. Ms. Santos. All right, we have a lobby full of people also signed up to testify, so, but what I would ask if, um, yeah, maybe we'll just get some questions right now for this panel before you, before we switch panels. So we'll start with the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, my question really is just, I wanted to make sure I get, talk to the Department of Public Health and the question is just, you know, we want it to be clear and on the record that you believe this will enable not only THC but also CBD to be sold in edibles with the passage of this law. Is this language sufficient to ensure that THC and CBD can be infused into food products?
Yes. Yes, we do believe this is adequate to address the concerns about edibles. This was, this document was also reviewed by the Governance Legal Council as well and we all concur that this should be adequate to address the concerns regarding edibles. Thank you.
Thanks. Also, another concern that's been brought up to my office and to myself personally a lot since the press release went out from the Department of Public Health regarding, regarding the inability to allow edibles with THC or any food products with THC and CBD in them. A lot of people who are currently selling CBDs, they're concerned. Have you, has the Department of Public Health gone around and shut down any people from selling CBD products at this time?
I was gonna give it up to you to speak. No, we have not actively pursued nor closed any establishment because they were selling cannabis-infused products.
Particularly, I'm just talking about CBDs at this time because THC, that's not, no one can sell THC products yet legally until, you know, they go through the Cannabis Control Board, get the proper licensing. So I want to kind of separate the THC and the CBD. CBD's been federally-legalized through the Farm Bill in 2018 through the legalization of hemp. So I just wanted to be clear whether or not Public Health and your testimony, as I understand, is that you guys have not stopped or seized any CBD products on Guam?
The Department of Public Health and Social Services has not actively pursued any regulatory actions against any businesses that were selling CBD product.
Well, is there any plan to do that in the future or does this language eliminate that from being a possibility?
Right, we anticipate this will, this proposal will be passed and after that, then we'll treat essentially as a food product, regardless whether it has CBD or other cannabis byproduct. So basically, we treat it as regular food.
Now, that's with reference to food products. I know there's also some CBD products that are sold as smokable products. They're not necessarily food products. Is that something that Public Health is looking at regulating in any way? Does this cover that? Because this, this is a section in the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act, but it seems like the language is more geared towards specifically food products. So a concern that's been raised to me is that, you know, people who are selling CBD products that are, you know, like vapes or smokable CBD products, there's even some places that sell CBD flower. And the question has been raised whether or not they would be able to continue to sell those CBD products.
Senator, I can only comment on the bill that's proposed and this is specific to food and cosmetics. We don't directly regulate, well, we don't regulate tobacco products and cigarette products for other inhalants such as vape. That's something that needs to be further reviewed, but specific to food, edibles, this bill will address that concern.
Thanks. You mentioned further reviewed with vape products. Could you explain that a little bit?
So our Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act does not explicitly mention vape product. So the question becomes whether, what category, if at all, would fall on the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act. So that's something we still internally needs to be looked into and we've been in communication with U.S. Food and Drug Administration for the fact that there is a language in the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act which references federal regulations. So that's an area which still has yet to be, at least internally, addressed because I simply don't know the answer to that, Senator. But as I mentioned, I think the biggest concern or hurdle from what I heard from the community has been about edibles and we believe this should address that.
Now, when you mentioned vape products, is that vape products in general or vape products that include CBD? So you're essentially saying that the food,
In general, sir.
So in general, the Guam Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act doesn't touch vape products, period? Obviously because it's a new product, right?
Right, it's not explicitly stated in the Food, Drug and Cosmetic Act.
So basically, right now, Public Health is sort of not regulating any vape products?
We have not taken any action on vape products.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. A few questions for Public Health. Have you received any applications for medical cannabis manufacturers since the application period was open and the rules were adopted?
Senator, I can only speak for the Division Environmental Health. I, our program does not, our division does not oversee the medicinal cannabis for the department. Fortunately, the representative from that program Fortunately, the representative from that program is not here, so I think it would be irresponsible for me to respond to that question, because I don't know the answer.
The rules, there are also rules in the GAR that govern food additives. And do you think that this language amending the statute is sufficient to affect the same purpose in the GAR, the same effect?
Yes, Senator. So we actually included, in the proposed bill, there's included language on chapter 20, chapters 23 and 24 of Title 10 Guam Code annotated, which are the statutes and also oversees the regulations for that statute, which will allow us to issue sanitary permits to food establishments such as retail stores for them to sell these products.
Speaker, to add to that, we believe the language is like, as proposed in Bill 333 is like a catch-all, which would address the concern that was brought up on this floor about edibles, whether it be through sanitary permit or just direct selling.
All right. And does Public Health treat differently hemp products?
Thank you, Senator. So the 2018 Farm Bill, actually, in a nutshell, it removed hemp from the definition of marijuana in the Controlled Substances Act. But that bill also explicitly preserved FDA's authority over hemp products and any other food products. So because our local Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act closely mirrors the federal Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act, so it is our division's position that we will treat any food product or any, if it contains cannabis or not, as a regular food, and we will use the local Food, Drug, and Cosmetic Act to, the requirements of that act to regulate those products.
Okay. If this bill's passed?
Yes.
Okay. And do you anticipate any other changes that would be necessary to the cannabis rules or to statutes in order for the industry?
Once again, Speaker, I can only speak for the division. The recreational, well, rephrase that, the medicinal cannabis program is not within the Division of Environmental Health, so I can't speak for that. The Division of Environmental Health cannot speak on to that. We're not anticipating anything.
All right. And maybe Director Shimizu, do you anticipate any other changes that need to be made to the cannabis rules or these, or the statute, or the statutes to issue licenses?
Well, with regards to the licensing, of course, our team actually has begun, you know, we did issue what we call the six steps to obtaining a cannabis business license, and we're at what we believe is step three, which is the issuance of responsible official cannabis identification cards. Of course, Speaker Trelawney, you know, as we were contemplating and putting the rules and regulations together, you know, what we did was we patterned it against medicinal for the most part, with some exceptions that our board had made. And there may be some items that, as we are working to address the process itself, that we may need to kind of bring to the legislature for additional discussion. However, at this time, you know, those are things that I will have to kind of compile so that we can, again, further discuss. Some of them may have to do with, in terms of taxation, making sure, for example, that we know, or that we indicate exactly what the deadline is for the excise tax relating to cannabis. So some things are administrative, and again, we were working to meet with our team on that. But in terms of where we are in issuing responsible official cannabis identification cards, which actually, next week, our board will be reviewing or receiving for the first time those cannabis identification card applications. At this time, at least for where we are, we're okay, but I know our team has been in discussion about the next steps, because after the responsible official cannabis identification card application, then there is the cannabis establishment license application, and then there is the permit-to-operate application, which is similar to the business license process. And then after that, then that's when the actual business license for the activity can be issued. So our team has been working to conduct orientations for our licensing and permitting agencies, and again, we will, we would like to perhaps maybe open discussions if there are other items that we wish to bring to the body for discussion. But in the issue of edibles, there is no other item that we wish to or that we have comment on.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Roberto, I would want you to know, yeah, that I've written down your recommendations, and I do find some of them reasonable, and would like to have further discussion on those. But in the interest of time today, we'll stick to this one bill, but we will, of course, I'm sure the sponsor of this bill will also, will work together to consider the rest of your recommendations. I'll now open the floor to my colleague, Senator Titigui.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I just have one question. Most of them were answered. Tom, have you had the opportunity, or your department had the opportunity, to look at other jurisdictions regarding to the language that's in here that it complies? And which state have you reviewed?
So the Department of Public Health, they had secured the contract of a consultant who had, an expert who has broad and vast knowledge about cannabis and this industry across the nation. And the recommendation actually came from the consultant, and he referenced several regulations and laws, which we did review. Sorry, I can't call that a state particularly, Senator, but the language as indicated here is consistent with the recommendation that was given by the consultant.
Is your consultant still with Public Health?
You know, it wasn't contracted through our division, Senator, so I don't know the current status. That was through our, I believe, our medicinal marijuana program, not with our Division of Environmental Health. So I can't, I don't know the answer to that, Senator.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to know if you can find out for me, Tom?
Yes, most definitely.
Thank you. See if there's someone. Daphne, are you still on, and good morning to you, are you still on the cannabis board?
How many? Good morning, Senator Titigui. Yes, so there are nine members of the cannabis board, and the Department of Revenue and Taxation Director is one of the members of the board. With regards to the consultant for the Department of Public Health and Social Services, I know that, of course, the Department of Environmental Health doesn't deal directly with that particular consultant. However, our team has been working with the Department of Public Health and Social Services, the other, the group that supports the medicinal board with regards to that consultant. My understanding is that that is still the public health consultant, and also, of course, in the Department of Revenue and Taxation, because we are in need of the, we are in need of the services as well, the technical expertise for the consultants, we've also been working so that that way we can, we can also avail of that consultant services.
Thank you so much, Daphne. And Mr. Roberto, yes, I agree with the speaker, there are other areas that we need to look into to make this a better, you know, better industry, you know, for everyone to do. And I thank you, Mr. Solis, as well, for your story as a cancer survivor myself, you know, and seeing my mother go through cancer herself. This is way back in 1990s, you know, early on. It was the only thing that helped her eat, you know, when it came time to it. So appreciate your story and sharing it with the public too as well, that there are alternatives. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Trelawney?
I just want to address this question to Public Health. Do you know that the active ingredients of the THC is dependent on the, on the location where the plant is planted? Do you guys know that?
Senator, I'm not an expert on marijuana, so I can't answer this.
Because, you know, when you, when you talk about cannabis, right, you're talking, you know, there's different, there's different kinds of cannabis, and the most potent cannabis is found in India. And the active ingredients are what we call the THC, tetrahydrocannabinol. So I'm just kind of concerned about, because what is the rationale of in testing the ingredients? What is the rationale on that one? Because if you have different kinds of cannabis grown in different areas, the potency of those cannabis differentiate. Some are higher and some are lower. And by experience, and the study that I made, is that the indica cannabis is the most potent cannabis there is in this world. And we do experience India cannabis on Guam. So what are you gonna do? If you test, for example, let's say 10% of the active ingredient comes out with locally grown cannabis, and then you find a different type of cannabis that came from India, for example, and it goes up to 30% of active ingredients, what are you gonna do about it? My question is, I don't know the rationale on why we're gonna test this cannabis plants, because cannabis have different potency depending on the location where they were grown. So what are you gonna do if the different, the ingredients, the active ingredients is different from the local plant? What is Public Health gonna do? Are you going to deny that or make that a point of concern? That's what I'm asking.
Senator, I can only speak to the proposed legislation, Bill 333. If passed, it will be treated like any other food product. As to the standards and the testing, they'll be regulated through a deference statute, which I, which is not with our Food and Drug Cosmetic Act, Senator.
And sir, that is why I'm concerned about the testing process, because some cannabis have different, you know, ingredients, the active ingredients on tetrahydrocannabinol. So if you find that the local ingredient is 30% active, and then you test another cannabis that goes up to 30 to 40%, then what are we gonna do on that one? Are you gonna go generally on just cannabis, whatever the ingredients, the tolerance of that ingredients may cause? What are we gonna do about it? Because I don't see the rationale in testing the cannabis, because there's different cannabis that is grown in different areas, and the present, the active ingredients on these cannabis are different. So if you come out with testing, and the testing for the local is, for example, 10%, and the cannabis that came from India or elsewhere in Africa is 30 to 40%, then what are we going to do about it? Are we going to restrict the issuance of that particular ingredients? Or just go locally with the local plants? There's a lot of questions that I would like to ask regarding that, because I went, I went through a whole lot of training. When I used to work with DEA, I was over in Washington, DC, and I learned about the different type of cannabis that is grown around the world. And the cannabis that is grown around the world have different tolerance of potency. So that's what I'm asking. If your testing is 10% and the other one is 20, 30%, are you going to restrict the issuance of that 30%? I need an answer to that, because, you know, I don't see the rationale on the testing process, because there are different types of cannabis, and the active ingredients is not the same.
Senator, I'll defer that question to the Cannabis Control Board, who regulates, that regulates cannabis. Senator, I cannot answer that question from an environmental health perspective.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. All right. Thank you to the panel. Situas masis. We'll welcome the next panel, and while they're coming in, we're going to, I'd just like to acknowledge for the record that we have received written testimony from the Office of the Attorney General of Guam. That says, "In our review of the cannabis rules and regulations, it was apparent that the regulation and sale of cannabis edibles was contemplated and accounted for. To the extent there was any ambiguity, that a conflict existed between the statute and the rules and regulations, we believe Bill 333 helps to clarify that sale of edibles will be permitted and properly regulated in Guam." That's from the Office of the Attorney General of Guam. We also have a fiscal note on this bill from BBMR. And a recommendation from our own counsel. BBMR's testimony says that "The Bureau supports the intent of Bill 333 by including cannabis-infused products. There will not only be an increase in regulation of the cannabis industry, but also an increase in tax revenue. As the industry continues to expand, the importance of including the various products which are inclusive of this term are vital to ensuring the success of this venture. Bureau fully concurs with this proposed legislation, fully supports its passage." It says also that "According to an economic study conducted by Tourism Economics, it is estimated that direct spending in the cannabis industry will generate an estimated $8 million for Guam in tax revenues for the first year. With cannabis edibles and cosmetics constituting for about 11% in sales nationwide, failure to amend the current language could adversely impact tax revenues generated by at least $880,000 in the first year. As Guam further embarks on providing conscientious legislation on recreational cannabis, the success of this new industry must be ensured by not limiting stakeholders and businesses and by providing a full array of safe products available to consumers." That's signed by Lester Carlson from BBMR. All right. So we'll begin with additional testimony. Thank you for this other panel to come in, and we'll begin with Vanessa Williams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Good morning, Senators. My name is Vanessa Williams. I am the chairperson of the Cannabis Control Board, and I'm here, I don't have any written testimony or prepared in advance for this here, for this bill, 333-36, but I am here to answer any questions. I heard from the first panel, there were questions directed for the cannabis board, hopefully clarify anything. I personally am in support of Bill 333-36, and thank you to the senators for sponsoring and working quickly to address the manufacturing and edible issues. I believe that this bill is consistent with the intent of the Cannabis Industry Act and with the rules that the cannabis board promulgated as required by the Cannabis Industry Act. You know, we addressed edibles, we anticipated manufacturing, the tourism, or the economic impact study anticipated that would be not insignificant portion of the market. And it was unfortunate when we heard at the hearing on our rules and regulations that Public Health said that they did not deem cannabis illegal. So we're so happy that they worked with the legislature and with you senators to quickly address this issue. So I believe it's consistent with the, with the requirements of the Cannabis Control Board. I'm personally in support of it, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you, Senators.
Thank you, Attorney Williams. Are you Mr. Solis, Steve Solis? Please proceed.
Yes, half a day, Senators. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of myself. I'm here in support of Bill 333-36. I'm basically here because there are people out there who need alternative ways of healing other than the use of pharmaceuticals. As we all know, there are known complications when relying heavily on such pharmaceutical medications, on which I don't need a list, because it is already known. Cannabis consumption extends on a spectrum, most partaken vaporized smoke culture, as some might need other methods of consumption, such as topicals, edibles, and blending of essential oils for aromatherapy. Others might CBD, or might need CBD applications for cannabis, which is known to contain less than 0.3% THC. I know this because I was a former Prop 215 medical cardholder in California. We can all go back and bicker, we can all go back and forth about baked good and infused products to be consumed, but I'm-- products to be consumed, but I'm here advocating for the many that need alternative methods of can, of consumption of cannabis. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Solis. Are you Ms. Abinalis? Please proceed. Sorry, can you make it louder? Yeah. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Buenos Hafaday, I am presenting this testimonial on behalf of the Homegrown Collective. We created the Homegrown Collective to connect like-minded cannabis advocates and allies through wellness, sustainability, and education in Guam and beyond. We are here to show strong support for Bill 333-36 relative to the cannabis content in edible and cosmetic cannabis products. We're just here to bring awareness to five key points on how edibles are beneficial to our community. The first point is how infused products help deliver the medicinal properties of cannabis to patients who may have respiratory issues. By infusing cannabis into a variety of edibles that allows patients to choose a different way of consuming cannabis in lieu of smoking. The second point, it would be, would be that infused products allow a more consistent dose of cannabis for all levels of consumers. Compared to smoking flowers that can be harsh on the throat and lungs, infused edibles are easier to measure to help effectiveness of the dosage. It allows, it also allows for a more controlled method called microdosing. Microdosing is a technique for studying the effects of certain cannabis in humans through the administration of those doses so low they are unlikely to produce euphoric body effects, but impacts enough to measure the effects of THC or CBD on the body. The third point is the longer effects of cannabis can be found through the use of edibles. In the approved Cannabis Control Board rules, the exact quantity of THC is required to be plainly printed on the package of each item, but also its longevity and health. So, and then the fourth point is the economic growth opportunity that we see. Development of this new industry will touch all aspects of our economy, from agriculture to tourism, wholesale, retail, infrastructure, and commercial. The fifth point is the positive environmental benefits. Growing the cannabis plant, whether it is cannabis sativa, which is hemp, and cannabis indica, which is marijuana or propaganda named marijuana, can positively impact our island's topsoil and reduce the carbon emissions by the implantation of outdoor planting. Along with this testimony, I will also be submitting signed petitions from citizens in the community who strongly support the inclusion of cannabis-infused edibles. And on the behalf of the Homegrown Collective, we thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Savaris.
Good morning, Hafaday, Senator, Speaker Terlali. Thank you, Senator Rogel, Senator Taregui, Senator Terlali, for all, for all being here and pushing this bill forward. First and foremost, I, I support Bill 333-36, because the reality of it is this supports, this supports the KC Conception Act, which, which led to the rules, the rule, the, the medical cannabis rules and regulation, which is Bill 33, Public Law 33-220. This also supports the good Senator Rogel's Bill 30, Public Law 35-5, the Guam Cannabis Industry Act. And then the sequential rules that was just lapsed into law a couple months ago. This is a carryover, this is a carryover bill to support those rules and regulations to help our community, not just economically, but our people. Our people and our patients that live on this island who call Guam home. First and foremost, legal cannabis is already happening in the States. The Farm Bill of 2018, which legalized the production of hemp cannabis under 0.3% THC content, which they could, which the federal government has reclassified and calls it hemp, is federally legal. There are currently stores, we saw the first, one of the first stores that opened up was Ladystone Wellness Center, which is now closed, that provided CBD. We have the relief shop, we have good, we have different places on this island to get commodity, and we're from the, from the memorandum that was released from Public Health, they're saying they're going to start banning these products. This is federally legal, and it was actually made in a jurisdiction that they have gone through the inspection with the legalities of that jurisdiction and then it's sent, just like we've seen with other manufactured goods that, that are imported to our island. We want to talk about, if we're going to do this and we're going to test all the CBD products that have already been tested in the States and being shipped here, that's federally legal for commerce, then we should start talking about testing our, the produce that comes in, testing the cookies that are packaged that meet the federal, their regulations within their state. We need, if we're going to talk about just segregating cannabis or hemp, which is federally legal, and it's already been processed and embedded in their, in that individual jurisdiction before it's even sent here, and lab tested. It is lab tested to ensure federal compliance. It is part of the regulations that are drafted. This is why we need to look at hemp production here, so we can actually jump on this train and produce hemp and send it off-island, because we need to look at an export economy. Also, I've been advocating for cannabis reform on Guam for the last eight years. And I'll tell you, this has been an uphill journey. And when I learned about edibles, it made my life so much easier. I remember when I first started doing this, I used to come into this legislature smelling like, like cannabis, and it would get cold blooded by Senators sitting on the stage or up on that podium. And today, I don't have to do that, because there's something that I can consume that will hold me for four to six hours, a dosing that actually makes sense for me as a patient that supports me to be up here and do these things. For years, there have been people who call me with all, with dementia, Alzheimer's, parents with kids with autism, seizures, epilepsy, cancer, terminal cancer patients whose family members are calling me, crying, saying, "John, when are we going to get this up and running?" And then all of a sudden, we see Public Health send out a memorandum saying, "We're going to ban this," and now we have to rush to do a bill like this. It made no sense, when really, it's, the commerce is already happening. The reality is, we want to turn the black to green, and that's what we should be pushing for, not small bills that are, that we're worrying about the, the little details that are happening. The reality is, we need to, we need, our, our island needs legal safe cannabis, and our island also needs that economic boost, because we see right now that our economy is struggling at a massive level. With the support of every single person in the legislature, I know we can push this through, make it veto-proof, and get it through, because the reality is, cannabis industry is already live and well on this island. And all this is going to do is keep people in the black market, and that's not what the intent of this industry was. That's not how we help people as a government. That is not how, how we should be helping people, letting them go to the black market. I ask each and every one of our legislators, Senators who are not here, take a look at this and push it forward. Thank you, guys, and, and I'll be here for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Savaris. Mr. Uggan.
My name is Kevin Uggan, and I'm here to submit my testimony and strong support for Bill 333-36, an act relative to cannabis content in edibles and cosmetic cannabis products. I am here because of the medicinal benefits of cannabis-infused edibles. I have met many people, including family members, who suffer from chronic pains and illnesses, and through their, their personal experiences, they have determined that cannabis is a true healer. It's unfortunate that for many others on island, the stigma of using cannabis, mainly smoking, is still very predominant. Even with the passage of the new recreational cannabis laws, most of them are too afraid to be stereotyped or even shunned. Through conversations with them, I have found that most of the patients and family members are relatively open to consumption through cannabis-infused edibles, and they are willing to explore the health benefits associated with cannabis. Thank you very, no, that's not the end. Sorry. Every time I think of cannabis-infused edibles, I recall an uncle of mine who was in his final stages of cancer. My cousin, his daughter, came to me to source cannabis for him to smoke, so he can gain an appetite to eat as he was not eating as much as he, he was losing weight fast. I recall him smoking, and while, and a while later, he gained a small appetite, which my cousin and aunt quickly capitalized on it by feeding him hearty meals to try and sustain him and possibly gain some weight. Through cannabis, he was able to gain a small appetite and ate more food in his one sitting compared to the week before without cannabis. He commented that he was open to cannabis, but suggested he take edibles, as the smoke was causing him to cough from harshness and his condition. Those words that he spoke remain true, as many others who consume edibles are a testament to cannabis and its healing properties. My uncle unfortunately passed. But I feel good knowing, in that short time, he was able to feel some sort of relief and gain an appetite and leave this world peacefully through this amazing plant. This experience for me has been a major driving force in being a proactive citizen when lobbying for cannabis. By amending the current law and allowing the sale of edibles, we are really giving families on island an alternative form of relief for their loved ones. Thank you very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you very much, Mr. Uggan. Mr. Janae Uggan.
Buenos Hafaday. Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here today. My testimony, oral testimony is basically my written testimony, which has been submitted, and I just wanted to point out that my testimony is as a citizen who is looking to relocate because of the economic situations here on island. Buenos Hafaday. My name is Janae Uggan, and I'm here to submit testimony and strong support for Bill 333-36, an act relative to cannabis content in edibles and cosmetic cannabis products. I have always believed the cannabis industry would be beneficial to the economy of our island and help rejuvenate our current economic state. In 2020, Forbes Magazine posted an article written by senior contributor Chris Crane, and the title was, "Cannabis Legalization Is Key To Economic Recovery, Much Like Ending Alcohol Prohibition Helped Us Out Of The Great Depression." Cannabis is the key to our economic recovery after this pandemic. Although we have made great strides in 2013, when Senator Tina Muñoz-Barnes and Senator Dr. Alina Maschida introduced the Wacan Conception Compassionate Cannabis Use Act, and again in 2019, when Governor Lillian Guerrero signed a Cannabis Industry Act into law authored by Senator Clint Rogel, we will still fall short without the inclusion of cannabis-infused edibles. The Marijuana Business Daily, one of the leading business news sources for the cannabis industry, reported that in the United States, the sales of adult-use cannabis edibles were valued at approximately $3.6 billion in 2020, uh, $3.6 billion in 2021, and it is expected to increase to $8.24 billion by 2025. Forbes Magazine also shared a list of the top entrepreneurs and change makers in the cannabis industry. This list by Forbes was compiled by interviewing dozen of industry analysts, investors, entrepreneurs, executives, and business owners. In this list of 42 cannabis pioneers, three businesses were cannabis-infused manufacturers, and two were cannabis-infused beverage manufacturing. The edibles market came in second in revenue after the, after the vertically-integrated cannabis brands, and third in revenue if you add in enterprise technology, which is cannabis software such as Metr. I share these numbers because cannabis-infused edibles is a specialized market that have the potential to add to the growth of our island economy. Not surprising, there is currently a strong cannabis-infused edible black market on island. Cannabis-infused edibles is a lucrative business, because current consumers and those new to cannabis are drawn to this alternative form of consumption that does not involve smoking. They like the fact that dosage can be measured, and there are different variations of infused edibles to choose from. One current infused edible creator has shared that their customer base ranges from patients suffering from chronic illness, veterans who have combat-related ailments, and high-level executives that experience anxieties. In an unregulated market, this infused edible creator can earn between $600 to $1,500 weekly for items such as baked goods, gummies, and hard candies. These numbers are considerably moderate estimate, as they are based off of the number of consumers they service, not taking into account the possible revenue from consumers that they turn away due to high demand and lack of products. Economically, the inclusion of cannabis-infused edibles spans and directly benefits many other industries on island. Agriculturally, as infused edible creators will create a demand for more plants. Wholesale, as proper product packaging is important for safe consumption. Commercial retail, as businesses will be able to sell both THC and CBD edibles. The demand for cannabis edibles can create jobs. Small businesses, specifically businesses in specialized markets such as gourmet edibles, cannabis-infused beverages, and cannabis confectionaries will grow significantly, creating a need for more infrastructure such as sanitary kitchens, cooperative kitchens, and even retail space. Before ending, I would be remiss if I didn't mention one last concern, and that is the affordability of the cannabis-infused edible market. I understand that this is probably not the best time as a small business, but as a small business owner and former food business entrepreneur, I feel that it should be discussed. Opening a food business on island is hard. There are permits, sanitary regulations, and other strict rules that are enforced, because it must be prepared safely for human consumption. Add on top of that the fees and strict enforcement of the rules and regulations for cannabis products, and you will find out not many specialized cannabis markets can afford the fees and licenses. Although many will argue that the solution to this are cooperative kitchens, not many entrepreneurs are comfortable sharing spaces for many different reasons. I continue to ask that the fee schedule for cannabis-related licenses and permits be reduced or made affordable, so that local grassroots, homegrown entrepreneurs will be able to benefit from these monumental changes. Thank you all. Beba Cannabis and Beba Guam.
Thank you, Ms. Uggan.
All right. So for this panel, there are still some additional panels outside, so, but I will allow questions for this panel. Senator Rogel? I have a question for Attorney Williams. So in Ms. Abinalis' testimony, she pointed out that according to the cannabis rules, the exact THC quantity must be plainly printed on the package. This is to be enforced by the Division of Environmental Health at the Department of Public Health and Social Services, or who will be enforcing that?
I'm not sure if it's that division. I believe so, I don't want to say, but it is Public Health. So that requirement is in, I believe it's Article 5 or 7 of our Rules and regs, are labeling and packaging requirements, and those are enforced by Public Health. So I, I'm sorry, I can't answer if it's the Division of Environmental Health or if it's another division, but it is Public Health.
All right. And when you were discussing those rules, did you, was it your understanding that they would be able to adequately regulate that?
Yes, they were involved. So the director or their designee of the Department of Public Health is a member of the Cannabis Board by law, and those rules and regulations were drafted, actually, the original iteration comes from Public Health, and within, within each section of the rules, we make it clear the policy, who the primary regulatory agency is. So yes, they were consulted. It's a labeling and packaging requirement, and, you know, they're, my understanding is they're looking to see, okay, did they certify this is how much THC or CBD is in the product that's packaged by milligrams per package?
Okay. And then when they, does their license specifically detail edibles versus any other product? Is that a requirement?
No. If you are licensed, it's to be a manufacturing product facility, that can be any type of manufactured product.
All right. Well, I wanted to ask Revantax, for retail, do they need to specify retail cannabis products or not at all?
You know, I'm not sure if there's any language that says this, you know, shall not be resold, but the way that the industry or the rules are structured right now is because... is because you can only have a license in one category. So right now, there is no vertical integration yet. You can only manufacture or you can only retail. So it would have to go to a retail store. I'm not sure if that answers your question.
Right. Well, does the retail license have to specify retail of edibles?
The retail license is for any retail.
Any type, in general?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, Senator Taitikui?
Ms. Williams, with regards to the board and the rules and regulations, because I remember we went through, actually, the rules and regs, and they talked about edibles. And some of those who came to testify were concerned that it was not included in the rules and regs, that they didn't address this. Is that the case?
I'm sorry, Senator Taitikui, can I just repeat? Because I'm not sure I heard the specific question.
Yeah, I know.
Is the question, is it accurate that the rules do not address edibles?
Right. There was some, some of the people that came to testify during the public hearing on the rules and regs had concerns that the rules and regs did not address some of the areas that touched on edibles. Is there anything that's missing in the rules and regs to secure the use of edibles? The guidance on who can purchase edibles as an adult? You have to be 18 and older in order to be able to purchase edibles? Things like that in the rules and regs?
No, I don't believe so. So the way the rules are written, it's not specific to like who can purchase and how much you can buy isn't restricted by category of what type of cannabis product. It just applies to any cannabis or cannabis product. So things like age restriction requirements apply to all facilities or to, you know, anyone who enters a retail facility, not just for edibles. In terms of what was missing to allow the sale, the manufacture and sale of edibles, to my knowledge, this component, you know, this prohibition in the Guam Food Drug and Cosmetic Act was the only obstacle to allowing for these agencies to license, which would be specifically public health, to give their seal of approval and their clearance so that Revantax and the board can ultimately approve the license for the manufacturing facility.
Thank you for clearing that up. That's all, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Terlahi?
First off, I just want to thank the panel for coming here and testifying. And you guys got my support. As a co-sponsor for the cannabis bill, I support all the testimonies that were presented to us, and I want to thank you very much. The only thing that I wanted to touch on this one, and I asked the last panel about the testing process, because knowing that the different ingredients on marijuana itself, the potency of each plant is dependent on where the plant is grown. Like indica, somebody mentioned indica, that came from India. It's one of the most potent marijuana plants. So I wanted to ask them to do away. I was asking, what is the rationale of testing? Because this is going to delay the whole process. Let's do it like what they did in CNMI. Just go on and let's implement the program. And I want to thank you all for being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you to the panel again. Mr. Savaris, pardon?
Can I address the good speaker's statement when it comes to lab testing and why it's kind of crucial? So when it comes to edibles, when we want to dial down the milligrams, because the plant maximization of output, you have to be able to test it, right? So for example, a plant, you alluded to 40% earlier. So if a plant, a raw plant tested 40%, and then it's extracted, that percentage is changed because what you're doing is actually extracting out the cannabinoids from that plant and then making it into, basically making it into a concentrated version and then reconstituting it with other ingredients to actually bring it down to a smaller milligram dosage.
Done. I understand, I understand. But what I'm talking about is the plant itself. I'm not talking about food product. I'm talking about the plant itself. Okay, the food products, they have to test. That's part of the requirement for public health. But I'm talking about the plant itself. If they're going to mix it up with a food product, before they mix it with a food product, they have to test it. They have to test the food product, not the plant itself. Because different plant from different region, grown from different region have different potency. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Which is absolutely true. So you got to test the raw plant, but you got to test that raw plant prior to going out, even into that system, and then retest. The problem is, and what had happened in the states is when things were being tested after post-processing, they were failing. They were failing because there's other ingredients, active ingredients that may cause the batch to fail. So they got to go back and for contact tracing purposes, through the sea to sell. This is why that mechanism is put in place. You test the raw plant, then you would test again after. Because there might be a miss, especially when dealing with manufactured goods. Because other active ingredients, the FDA has a different regulation for cannabis for testing, as well as the, there's an allowable amount of certain things through other laboratory, other testing procedures. And this is why you have to test at multiple levels. You can't just test at plant level, then you can't, because the conversion changes.
Thank you, Mr. Savaris. Thank you to the panel again. We will welcome the next panel in, while I also welcome our colleague, Senator Anthony Ada. Sisus Masi, Senator. Could we please get the next panel? All right. And I'd like to again acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, Senator Rigel, sponsor of the bill, Senator Taitikui, Senator Pedro Terlahi. We've now been joined by Senator Anthony Ada and Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Sisus Masi. Other other members for this panel? I have two more. All right. Are we ready? Okay, let's begin. We'll begin with, well, I'm going to go with the order they signed in. Mr. Will Parkinson?
Hafare Speaker, my name is William Parkinson. I am a resident of Momong Toto Mighty. I'm formerly of the Cannabis Control Board, and I'm here today to testify in favor of Bill 333. Not only would it bring Guam law into uniformity with the intent of the Cannabis Industry Act, it would help our local patients, our medicinal patients. It would help future businesses and ancillary businesses. And it would help businesses that exist right now. There are currently businesses that, you know, sell CBD-infused products that would be affected by this today. So you know, not only would we be helping consumers, businesses in the futures, but we're helping people today. So that's why there is a time sensitivity to this that we really need to appreciate. As I like to think of the rules, the rules are not an end, the rules are kind of a beginning. We have other things on the rules that need to be addressed, but I believe that this is a good start. And so, you know, things, you know, I would ask this panel to look out at the future is easing of some of the manufacturing requirements, because there are other manufacturing requirements that are, what's the word, overly burdensome. And there are also things, hard conversations we need to have regarding testing if testing facilities do not become available. Personally, I'm in favor of provisions that if testing is not available, testing is not required. But testing is available, testing must be done, you know. So like I said, this is the beginning. I think this is a very good beginning. I believe that this should be adopted, and there's no reason it shouldn't be adopted. The only thing that would stop it is just, just politics, I guess. So I humbly ask this legislature to please consider adopting Bill 333 fully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parkinson. Attorney Fisher?
Good morning. I am here in support of this bill. I think fundamentally marijuana and its growth and sale and use on Guam is legal. It is an entrenched business here on Guam. It's an entrenched and healthy industry here on Guam. And it just seems a little peculiar not to allow edibles because we're essentially, you know, strangling the baby in the crib. Why in the world would we do this? I don't see any consistency between allowing smoking of marijuana, for example, and not allowing it to be used in a cookie or a confectionery of some sort. So it just seems intuitive, and it seems to make common sense to allow edibles to be used. I agree with Ms. Attorney Mendiola in her written submission from the Attorney General's Office that the rules and regs as they now exist contemplate the manufacture and sale of edibles. But I commend you folks, the senators, for removing any ambiguity which might exist and just saying straight up, edibles are okay. It just, it just seems to make sense, and it will inject a little bit of verve and vitality in the industry which otherwise might be stripped away because of the feeling that you cannot manufacture or sell edibles. Finally, and I'll be brief here. Finally, in this process, I note that in the bill, in at least one place, there's a reference to Title 10, Chapters 23 and 24, which are drinking and food establishments and so forth. It may be prudent to offer an amendment to this language, or an addition, rather, to the language, which would also reference the GAR, Guam Administrative Rules and Regulations in Public Health, as to the Controlled Substance Act. Because if the controlled substance, if there's a conflict arises between what the CSR says, the Controlled Substance Rules and Regulations, and what we have here, then, you know, lawyers will have a field day, right? So if you were, it's somehow to inject that into the bill so it would be doubly clear that this removal of a prohibition also applies in reference to the Controlled Substance Act. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bistrum Mendola?
Hafare, good morning. Good morning. Yeah. My name is Bistrum Mendola. I am a resident of Orde, registered voter. And I first and foremost thank you, honorable senators, for being here at this meeting. I'm glad to see two more additions to the panel. I appreciate your presence here. And of course, Senator Rigel, I commend you on the swift reaction to this. Another red tape on our end. I really, really want to emphasize that one of the important steps that we need to take to move forward in this current economy is to truly, truly remove any red tapes that are still remaining on our bills, on our code. Because how are we to recover economically if we continuously put a strain on our small businesses? We all know, and I'm sure you would agree, that our small business is the backbone of our taxpayer base. It is not the lower income, and sometimes sadly, not even the higher income, because there are many ways how you can avoid taxes. But the middle class and the small businesses are the ones that we need to take care of. And I implore you, implore you today to really take into account that by putting restrictions on the small business, we're putting restriction on our economic growth. So yes, I'm in support of Bill Number 333-36COR. I don't want to continue any further because I'm pretty sure that we're restraining time. But yet, again, I really appreciate you being here, and I would like you to consider voting in favor of that bill. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mendola. Theseus Mendola?
Guilty as charged. Hafare, guys, my name is, sorry, honorable senators, guys, I'm talking like we're... Anyways, my name is Theseus Mendola. I am part of the industry. I own a small business that has been helping people medicate since 2018. As soon as the passage of the 2018 Farm Bill, I was very concerned in the beginning. Actually, it was another individual that had first brought in CBD products to Guam. I did talk with him first because I was like, man, I don't want to break any laws. You know, we're going to be bringing this stuff in. Is it legal? And he says, yeah, we're bringing it in. It's completely legal. And I started, we weren't the first ones. We followed up after him. And we started opening up all of our locations, and we started having more of these products come out to market. One of the first things that we introduced was the CBD flower. That was great. Going into that, I'm leaning into language here because we've been a victim of certain agencies kind of interpreting, having their own interpretation of laws, did not understand the 2018 Farm Bill. And they, when I was on vacation, they held our products for over a month. Okay, I came back on island through the help of some senators, the administration at that time, they were able to release our products. They had used an old archaic way of testing cannabis, and it was an old analog testing meter that just basically just dilutes some liquid in there. And they said, oh, it's got THC. We're keeping it. So, you know, as a small business, that hurt us a lot. So I want to make sure, one of the emphasis I want to make sure here is that, you know, there's that clear separation. I am for both the hemp derived and the THC. But I want to make sure that the agencies that are going to be in charge of enforcement do not come to my establishment and shut us down or tell us they got to take certain products on because, oh, it says THC. There it is, Delta 8 THC. For some of you guys that may or may not know, derivatives of hemp are legal. That's the Delta 8s, Delta 10s, HHCs, THCOs, THCPs, so on and so forth. Okay, so I want to make sure that that's protected too as well, along with the legalized market of the Delta 9. Just want to make sure there's a separation there. That way, they don't come in and say, you're selling THC. You got to go get licensed. We're already licensed. We actually have a hemp license from Revantax. Okay, so yes, I am in support of Bill 333-36, not only as a business, but also as, for personal use for my mother and for some of my neighbors in my neighborhood. Some there either suffering from cancer that cannot eat. So we've actually introduced a liquid form that they're able to drink and still get that relief, opposed to taking these harder, over-the-counter drugs that are basically destroying their livers and their kidneys. My mom's been through three strokes. She got in a major car accident, all within the span of 10 or 12 years. She's pretty much bedridden. She gets around through my father, wheeling her around here and there. But the gummies have been helping her. And this is, this is coming from an old-school, 75 and 82-year-old. Okay, when I first brought that in, I said, hey, CBD, here, let's try this tincture. They tried it. I says, oh, boy, it's good. Okay, but after a while, she started building a tolerance. CBD had so much, it could only do so much for her. So we started bringing in the Delta 8s, the live resins, the Delta 10s. She's been using that regularly since then, and she's been completely on it, so much more that my dad started taking it. Okay, and these guys are just really hard up, don't want to take any cannabis. They've completely changed their minds. Okay? So she's using it for her sleep every night, and I was honestly afraid when I saw that thing with the public health coming out. Now, I find it kind of strange since 2018, only until now, they bring it up and say, hey, guess what? Edibles are illegal. We've been doing that since 2018. Okay, so obviously, I moved all the products out of the shelf and I held it for my mom. So obviously, I moved all the products out of the shelf and I held it for my mom, because I didn't want her to be without her, any of, any of the things that she needs, okay? And I'm glad that you guys came up with, came with this bill. Mr. Rigel knows, I've spoken to him personally, and I brought this up, and thank you so much for bringing this up very quickly. And that's pretty much it. I thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mendiola. Please give my regards to your mom. Now hear from James Kontinida-Wolffert.
Hi. Thanks for having me. Man, honestly, there's so much to talk about, I don't even know where to start. So I guess I'll just pick up where he left off, talking about the difference between THC from, you know, the regular weed plant that we know, and then it being bundled up with hemp. I currently have a business, it deals with hemp, you know, I've had that for three years, and I deal a lot with my elders that have issues, they got cancer, they can't smoke to get their relief, but they do enjoy edibles, they do enjoy CBD products. It's kind of scary that after all of this headway that we've been making, it's still kind of getting bundled together like they're not a separate plant, you know? Or a lot of people don't even know that there is industrial hemp, which, which is a whole nother animal, right? A whole nother industry in itself. But dealing with the hemp and stuff like that, you know, 2018, the Farm Bill that was passed, it was removed from the list, DEA's list, it's, let me pull this up here because... The Agricultural Improvement Act of 2018 authorized production of hemp and removed hemp and hemp seeds from the DEA Schedule Controlled Substance. It also directed the U.S. Department of Agriculture to issue regulations and guidance to implement programs to create consistent regulatory framework around production of hemp throughout the United States. Right now, you don't have to just infuse products with THC, you can go ahead and infuse it with CBD, you know, everybody has a different tolerance to things or what, what they can consume. When you look over here on these, the, on the rule set here that lapsed into law, I was talking with Will about it because there's a lot of stuff that is very confusing. In some areas, it says that you cannot infuse dairy products of any sort, butters, this or that, and just a couple of lines down, it says that we are allowed to. It can't get to retail stores, but he was explaining it can go from manufacturer to manufacturer. Essentially, what happened is, I guess, CCB had put a loop in there where you can make it if it's a manufacturer to manufacturer, but it can't go to retail, so what is the purpose of this? I feel pretty disappointed that it's been over three years since this thing passed, and here we are, we're, we're tackling all these little things that should have been solved even on the last time that we were in here, you know? We were not heard by anybody else, they just wanted to push it through, get it, get it done, and here we are, like cleaning up this mess, you know? Earlier, I was outside and I was listening to Senator Pedro talk about the testing. For me, when you look at Saipan, they got zero testing, and they're already up and running. I don't mind having it like that, but with the amount of stuff that you could feed these plants, heavy metals, pesticides, you know, all of these toxic chemicals that can go into it to make it bigger or whatnot, I would like to know that I'm not ingesting or inhaling any of these products. So I, I support the testing, you know, I could see the justification there. As far as like everything else that we're going through right now, what, it's three years since it's been rec-legal, it's been over six for medical, could you imagine how many relatives I've lost in this time and how many other people here on Guam are suffering and can't get the medication? Can't smoke, and now they're being told that one thing that is working for them is not allowed anymore. It's, it's pretty disappointing that all of these years go by, all of these deaths, all of the, all of these testings in the states, all of these results, you know, all, all of this is, is, is out there for us to, to gain knowledge off of. So it's not like a random market that we're just, Guam is the first one jumping in, we, we know what's out there, we know that they got steady guidelines that we could follow, base guidelines, I guess, you know? I just think it's funny that we're here right now, and I do appreciate you guys being here to listen and Clint and everybody else that pushed this bill, because it is a, it is a big situation and a big industry that we're, we're cutting off, you know? Like I said, I got a million things to, to say, but I'll go ahead and end it here for now, and I'll try to come back later when my head's clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfert. I think you've been very clear for us today. Ms. Carissa G. Espinoza Osari. Let me recognize the presence of Senator Joanne Brown, who's joined us this morning. Carissa Espinoza.
Half a day, everybody. Wow, that was really loud. My name is Ki Risa Espinoza, and today I'm here to show my support in Bill 333-36. I wanted to first and foremost thank, of course, Senator Clint Rigel and everyone who helped the team, whoever contributed in acting fast on this, thank you. And then also, before I continue, thank you to all the senators here today. I know maybe you might not agree with or understand, but thank you for trying to understand. First and foremost, I want to say, I came from a place where I didn't like cannabis, I didn't understand cannabis, I hated cannabis, but me and my friend, we would smoke it every day, and I would question her, why every time do we have to go, every time we have to go out and smoke, go out, why do we have to smoke every time? I never understood it, I always questioned it, until cannabis became medicine for me, until I needed cannabis every day because I felt like my brain was going to implode inside because I couldn't say what I wanted to, you know? Cannabis helped me to bring me back to center, and, you know, it, it made me realize that it is beyond just getting high anymore, it is medicine, it's sustainability, it's everything, it can be everything for our island. Now, getting into the edibles, I've only been a cannabis user for three years, maybe just a little bit more, and I actually just started learning about, you know, edibles, what goes into it, how to make it, how is it beneficial? And then even more recently with, you know, the rules and regulations and them making edibles illegal, and can I just say, especially CBD illegal? I am in support of THC and CBD edibles being legal, but if I'm going to be honest, I really do care more about those who need it medicinally. I mean, I'm just a recreational user to, to my knowledge, I don't know, maybe cannabis is helping some mental issues, and that's great, but, you know, I just don't want to see that being taken away from those who absolutely need it. And even now more that I'm in, you know, the community, I'm with the community, and we're talking about edibles and cannabis, you know, I see more people needing edibles, not because, you know, they like the type of high or whatever, because they need it, because they can't smoke it. And, you know, even recently, my uncle, he, he had a stroke a while back, he's actually just bedridden now, my family, we take care of him, and, you know, one day, he said, he's like, I need weed, I need weed, you know, barely, he could barely, you know, we put it together basically, and we're like, why? He's like, I can't sleep, I can't sleep, you know, cry, like almost crying, like I cannot sleep, because, you know, he just lays in his bed all night, all day, looking at the ceiling, he can't move, he can't really see anything, so, you know, he can't be watching TV or anything like that, you know, so it kind of saddens me. And plus, you know, my uncle, he, the way he consumes food, we usually blend it, so, I mean, I know there's many ways, right, to intake, to consume cannabis, it doesn't just have to be edibles, but I think if we have all of it available, why are we excluding one from those who prefer that way, you know? And like I said, my uncle, we have to blend his food, so, I mean, imagine if, you know, when we consult his doctors or whatnot and see if that's an option for him, you know, we can, we can blend brownies, my uncle loves desserts, I'm going to tell you right now, he's a big fan of desserts, so I think he would be absolutely delighted to have a brownie that tastes good and that also helps him. And that's pretty much it for me, I think. Again, thank you, senators, for trying to understand, for being here today, and for just hearing all of us out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Monica Marquez.
Hi, half a day. Thank you, senators, for giving me this opportunity to speak. I'm speaking in support of the Bill 333-36. I'm certified budtender with the emphasis on CBD and hemp. So first off, I'd like to reiterate how everyone has said that hemp and marijuana is two different plants. Marijuana is grown specifically for a high level THC and a low level CBD. Hemp is grown for high level CBD, low level THC. So hemp really, its purpose is for medicinal use. I myself am a fully cannabis medicinal user. I use CBD very regularly, very aggressively due to diagnoses of chronic pain and anxiety. So, so I would like to use my time to dedicate it to sharing the importance of edibles in the market. Our body has this system called the endocannabinoid system, which sends signals to various systems in our body, like our circulatory, respiratory, digestive, muscular system, just to name a few. This system already naturally makes a cannabinoid called endocannabinoid, excuse me, and what this does is it helps our body maintain a calm and at ease state of mind. And then when you add multiple cannabinoids, they actually work together to create an even bigger and better effect that one, just one cannabinoid can't even achieve by itself. So it's important, I think, in the bill to have CBD and THC as well as other cannabinoids, because, you know, like CBG, that's the mother of all cannabinoids, known for energizing. CBN, which is the natural relaxant cannabinoid, which can help people sleep if used in large amounts. And so with edibles, you have the opportunity to consume it in a fixed amount, and in my experience, I came from California, edibles are normally ranged from five milligrams, 10 milligrams, 25 milligrams, so there's always a level for whatever the consumer is comfortable consuming. And that's where being a budtender, a certified budtender is key, because what we do is we sit and we listen to what everyone has to say, digest it, and then best be there for that person to give personal experience on how certain edibles can help them. And so with edibles, you can consume it, it'll take 30 minutes for it to activate into your system, 30 minutes to two hours, lasting up to six to eight hours, which is actually the longest lasting effect that you can consume cannabis. So that's always good for people that are anticipating stress or anxiety or pain, whether you're going to the grocery store after COVID and you're scared, or you're flying for the first time and you would like to rest, you can plan for that medicinally, naturally with cannabis. So as a budtender also, we are trained to be able to decipher between accredited manufacturers and non-compliant manufacturers. With our hemp, with our hemp derived products specifically, what we do is we check for the organic grow practices from seed to sale, we also check for the cleanest extraction process, third-party lab tested, which means that COA's certificates of analysis are ready, readily available, whether it's on the actual package itself, on, on the, on the, excuse me. Normally, COAs are put into a QR code on specific packaging for that specific sample batch, as well as in my experience with practicing legitimate compliance in terms of manufacturing, the brands that we carry at the relief shop, they are, they are manufactured in a current good manufacturing practice facility that is regulated by the FDA, where an FDA representative comes out to their facility and has certain rules and regulations for them to operate and sell. So it is my passion to continue, train myself daily and educate the community on the importance of high-quality practices in the cannabis industry for the safest consumption experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marquez. All right, that, that is all the people who have signed up to testify, so we're going to take questions for this panel. Senator Rigel? Okay. If I could just ask Mr. Mendiola or Ms. Marquez or Mr. Wolfert, does any of you have any specific guidelines from Department of Public Health or Social Services as to your retail sales of hemp products in particular? Or any other products?
In what regards, can you just clarify?
Yeah, did, did, when you said, for example, that your products had been stopped somewhere in the past?
Yes.
I'm asking, between now and then, have you received any specific guidelines from public health as to, in regards to hemp products or other CBD products?
No, I mean, besides the most recent one that they had put out that was published all over the media, that was the only guidelines that we did have previous to that, you know, like our, my other fellow industry, business, small business owners, all our products come with COAs. I did, I did mention that to the customs agents and to the, the senators and the administration when I was trying to get the products out. I did explain to them that all the products were lab tested and approved through that regulation, so we've had COAs since the beginning.
All right, so that was a customs enforcement?
Yes.
All right, and so, but since then, nothing from public health, is that right?
No, not that, not that I can recall, it was just giving us a scare, we thought they were going to be coming through the door and taking all our stuff off the shelves.
Has any of you received anything additional from public health? All right, thank you. Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Senator Titegui?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to thank Mr. Tom Fisher for making that inclusion, you know, to ensure that we included in the bill to reference the GAR and the rules and regulations too. That was a, a good insight, I appreciate your input on that, Mr. Fisher. Thank you so much for being here, and everyone else who's here today, thank you. Last panel, I didn't have a chance to say hello to them and thank them as well, so I hope they're still out there and thank them for being here to testify. I know it's not easy coming in front of us, but we greatly appreciate it, and so does the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Tedlahey?
I just want to ask, Tom, are you talking about line nine all the way down to, because we, we probably need to remediate that thing regarding the issues on legalities.
Yes, sir, I was referencing, I was referencing 26...
26?
GA.
Sorry, can we get the microphone on, please?
Just maybe a little low.
Can everyone else turn theirs off?
Sir, I was referencing it's 26 G A R 41 604, in particular subsection B there, which has the definition of cannabis or marijuana. I would, I would just suggest that the definition of cannabis be expanded perhaps, well, you could, well, be expanded to include edibles, or you could do what you did before, which is merely reference it and say that you're taking edibles out.
Okay, okay, got, got you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Senator. Vice Speaker.
Madam Speaker, and I'd like to take this time to say, thank you for coming here and presenting your testimony in support of the bill. As I look at the panel, I also wanted to say thank you again to Attorney Fisher for acknowledging the fact that even the Attorney General's Office called, we did receive that letter from Attorney Stephanie Mendiola in reference to making sure that we clarify and, and make sure that if there is any perceived ambiguity regarding the ability for... is any perceived ambiguity regarding the ability for cannabis edibles, that, that we, that we address it here. I also want to say thank you to the panel for talking about the differences between the marijuana and the hemp and, and that. I, many, many years ago, Senator Yamashita and myself literally stood alone, wanting to see this industry work for those who were truly suffering from debilitating health issues. And fast forward to 2022, I must say that we at least come some way to, to at least try and make this industry work here. And as I see a mix of everybody on this panel, including panel members like Will Parkinson, to understand that, yes, this, we had to start from scratch, yes, we have these programs in place. But as in every bill that becomes law, there's always room for improvement and changes. And this is where we're at today. So when Senator Clint Rigel, the good senator from the South, had asked me to co-author this bill with him, I said most definitely, because we want to make sure that the, the community understands that even the, the industry, that you guys want to make sure that, that there are no ambiguities out there, and that we're clear, that we understand, and that you guys are willing to work with it as part of the industry. And you guys want to make it safe for our residents here. So, I continue to stay supportive, and will continue to listen to your concerns. And as we continue to move forward to make this industry strong here, that if there's any revisions or changes, that we continue, we will continue to work with it. But thank you for all your patience and time, because it has been very long since we initiate, initiated this almost 10 years ago. So, thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Brown? Sorry, Senator Ada, would you like?
I have no questions. Madam Speaker, it was asked earlier by Senator Titulay and answered by the panel earlier.
Thank you. Senator Brown?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I don't have any questions. I appreciate everyone showing up. I was watching your hearing. I had another U.S. Civil Rights online meeting to participate in and have quorum. So I was just in and out, listening to testimony earlier. I'm sure there's a lot more discussion that can take place, but I also know we're behind for our 10 o'clock hearings. I have no further questions or comments. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you to everyone for being here today.
Thank you, Senator. I'd just like to add that, so, thank you again to the panel. Thank you for your quick response and coming here today and for your continued involvement. Many of you have been involved since the very beginning of us trying to stand up the industry, to, to review the rules, which were quite significant, and, and then, of course, this. So it's my understanding that the previous rules and regs did not adequately address this edibles, that so public health sent out a notice recognizing the, their interpretation of the law and their ability to enforce. And, but they testified today that they did not, in fact, inspect or remove any edible products from any business. And so in that timeframe, since they sent out their notice, the sponsor of the bill and my committee have worked together to work with public health, ensure that this bill would remedy or to remove their ability, in fact, to deem unsafe products just because of the inclusion of cannabis or THC. But they would still be able to enforce all their other laws regarding food products. And so our committee did also schedule this hearing as a priority. And as, as you know, we do have other hearings today, but we did put this first, in our first available time slot, and to ensure that there would be no enforcement in the interim. So, and now that will allow the closing statement by the sponsor of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, first of all, I just, of course, want to thank you, Madam Speaker, for accepting my request to not only co-sponsor the measure, but also to expedite the hearing process. So I thank you very much for that, so that we can address this issue. And also, I'd like to thank my other co-sponsors, Vice Speaker Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Senator Jose Noguercin, and Jose Pito Titulay. And especially also thank all of you who came out to testify, testify today. Your testimony means a lot. It goes a long way, whether you believe it or not. I know sometimes when you appear before a public hearing, sometimes you may feel like you're not being heard. And sometimes that's the case. Sometimes we may not agree with what the testimony is. Sometimes other members of the legislature may not agree with the testimony provided. But that testimony really does help us to craft better legislation. It is something we listen to. We may not always agree with everything that's said. In fact, a lot of times, there's different testimony that's given. Some testimony today said eliminate the lab requirement. Other testimony today said keep the lab in. So we listen to this testimony and we weigh these things. And that's what helps us ultimately make our decision. And of course, we have to make our decision amongst 15 of us. So it's not just myself, it's not just the speaker. There's a lot of us that have differing opinions on the matter. And your opinions matter to us as well. So that's why I want to thank you all for your testimony this morning. And I will do my best to get this bill passed. And with that, I'd just like to say thank you for helping us to make Guam green again. Thank you.
Thank you. So this bill was placed on the session agenda as a potential item, or it's a potential item that can be placed on the session agenda in the upcoming session if, and we are going to work diligently to get this committee report out, so that it is available for the legislature if they so choose to put it on their agenda and move forward with it in, in our September session, which begins this Friday, and will continue through next week. So there being no additional individuals to present further testimony, this committee will consider Bill number 301-36 LS duly heard. Public hearings now adjourned. The time is 10:30 a.m. Sitos Massey.